I call the June 7, 2022, closed session meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, would you be kind enough to read to the public how to participate in this meeting?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd be happy to. The public can attend this meeting in person tonight, or they can watch it online on our government cable channels, or at fullerton.legistar.com. They can make public comments in person, or if they prefer to make public comments over Zoom. The phone number is 1-669-900-9128, or they can go to zoom.us, zoom.us/join, and the meeting ID is 978-4219-1797. And that and more information is on the agenda on our website.
Madam City Clerk, would you kindly call the roll?
Mayor Jung.
President.
Mayor Protam Whitaker.
Here.
Councilmember Dunlap.
Here.
Councilmember Silva.
Here.
And Councilmember Zara is absent.
We will now hear public comments on closed session items, seeing none in chambers. Are there any in Zoom?
None on Zoom.
Very well, we'll recess to closed session. Thank you, everyone. All right, good evening. I now call the June 7, 2022, meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, would you be kind enough, as to read the instructions for the public to participate this evening?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's meeting is available in person or online on any of our government TV or government cable channels, or at fullerton.legstar.com. Those who are here in person can make public comment in the chambers, and if people watching from home would like to make public comment, they can do so over Zoom at zoom.us/join, or call 1-669-900-9128. And the Zoom meeting ID is 978-4219-1797. And all that information that I read very quickly is available on our agenda on the website.
Thank you for that. Madam City Clerk, would you be kind enough, as to call the roll?
Mayor Jung.
President.
Mayor Protam Whitaker.
Here.
Councilmember Dunlap.
Here.
Councilmember Silva.
Here.
And Councilmember Zara is absent.
I'm going to call on Pastor Elliot Jung from One Life City Church, who will give the invocation this evening. Is Pastor Jung here? All right, I suppose I could call on the Mayor Protam. Sir, would you like to give this evening's invocation? If Pastor Jung's not here. Actually, I see him. He saved the day. He came. Pastor Jung.
Gracious and loving God, we thank you for the gift of today. Speak and discern the flourishing of our city. Help all individuals gathered here today to lead, speak, and listen with humility, charity, wisdom, and compassion. And through it, that we may see something holy and sacred in one another. We also give thanks for the opportunity to vote and be present in the process of democracy today. We do not take it for granted, and we pray that the collective, the sermon of the people, will be revealed and received to better shape our community and our neighborhoods. Lastly, we pray for a specific blessing over our council here today. May they continue to lead and guide our city and its people in a way that seeks the common good of all. We ask that you would renew their strength, grant them joy, and anoint them with blessing of creativity that builds community that is worthy of all human life. Amen.
Pastor Jung, if you don't mind, telling us a bit about your ministry at One Life City Church?
Yeah, absolutely. So we've been around for about eight years, and something that's exciting that's coming up this summer is we get to partner in this program called SOFO. Now, SOFO has been around since 2009, when the city, after the recession, had to cut a lot of the summer programs. So it was this beautiful partnership between the city, the church, and the nonprofits. And that legacy continues until, oh, that's me, and that legacy continues until today. So from July 5 through July 14, our church will be partnering with SOFO in the Richmond community alongside with Solidarity in the Maple Community and OC United in Orange Dorp. So really excited to be a part of that, and we look forward to just how our faith community could partner with our city at large. So honor it.
We are certainly grateful for your humble work. Thank you very much this evening.
Thank you.
And at this moment, I'd like to call on our Girl Scout troop, 7127, to lead us, please, in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, girls. All right, Mr. City Attorney, do we have a closed session report for this evening?
No report this evening.
Very well. At this point, if any council members have any ex parte communications that they'd like to report, please do so. Seeing none, we'll move on to presentations. I'm going to invite the entire council to come down with me and make a presentation to the before-mentioned Girl Scout troop, Orange County, 7127. This ought to be fun, guys.
We'll line up facing the crowd, all right, when you hear your name? Just, that's a move.
But come this way.
Go first?
Yeah.
Wait, wait, I got Natalie Natalia first. Oh, yeah, we'll do the cities first. Oh, yeah, you know what? We got time. We'll do everybody.
All right, so I guess we're going to do...
We'll do city first.
City first, well.
Just find their name and give them both.
All right. There you go. Okay. All right, so first, I guess, as we call your name, please come forward, and then we'll, you know, go ahead and you can face the crowd, and then we'll have time for a photo opportunity thereafter. So Sophia Cho, not here, okay?
You got extra time.
All right, let's do it.
Yeah, so next is Emma Gudiel. All right, there you go. A lot of applause is in order. Next is London Pio. All right, there you go. Congratulations. Next is Karis Hahn. Not here? Okay.
Not here?
Okay, next is Kira Song. Congratulations. So next, we have Olivia Lee. There you are, congratulations. Shilo Santos. Congratulations.
Congratulations, young lady.
So next, we have Leah Kim. There you are. Next, we... Last two, Mr. Mayor, so got a 50-50 shot. Okay, Lauren Yee.
I got it.
There you are. Now, I do want to read, we didn't talk about what this recognition is for, so I'm going to call up Natalia. But before we do, I'd like to say, this is presented in recognition of receiving the Bronze Award, which is an honor in cadet girl scouting for Troop 7127. They helped raise awareness on recycling textiles, a drive to collect clothing and shoes, and they partnered with the Love Fullerton event to help the community. The Fullerton City Council and all of our community would like to recognize Troop 7127 on this award this evening, and last, certainly not least, Natalia Flores. Congratulations.
All right, why don't we have you ladies?
All right, let's have the...
Come over here in the middle. So everyone slide over, Natalia slide to your left a little bit, and then we can be in the back of these smaller girls. Come on, come on in. All right. Mayor, step right in.
Sir.
Mayor Protam, don't be shy.
Squeeze in, right, squeeze in. Okay, there you go. There you go. Great. A big round of applause, please.
After much discussion, we realized that saving our planet was something really important to us.
Over 17 million tons of textiles, clothes, shoes, leftover fabric is thrown away every year polluting our planet.
We made partnerships with Love Fullerton, FSD, and of course, Girl Scouts of Orange County.
We advertised on Instagram, and with the help of our principals, we sent it through our schools through Peach Jar.
Here are some examples of our advertising getting out to the community.
We even made a commercial. Many of our, many people from our community came to this event. Our results: We collected about 35 bags, each bag weighing about 40 pounds. In total, it weighed about 1,400 pounds. Where does it all go? We recycled these clothes and shoes with different retail recycle programs. The shoes went to Nike, and the clothes went to H&amp;M. We got coupons from our drive.
Well, thank you very much. Natalia, is it? I freeze public speaking, too. Have to write everything down. Ladies, thank you very much for all you've done for our community. Parents, thank you very much for assisting these young girls and teaching them the value of public service. At this age, we are terribly grateful to all of you for your good works. Thank you, ladies. Well, Mr. Paul, you've got quite the standard to meet after those young ladies, but we do have a presentation from Mr. Ed Paul for our Memorial Day Service 2022. Sir.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council members, and city staff. My name is Ed Paul. I'm the coordinator of the Memorial Day program that's held every year at Loma Vista Memorial Park. This is a joint effort by our association, Fullerton American Legion Post 142, the City of Fullerton, and Loma Vista Memorial Park, all working together to make this happen. Usually, we honor a particular service branch, but since we haven't had a full ceremony in three years, we wanted to honor all veterans, so our PIN and our program says, "We don't know them all, but we owe them all." So two weeks, three weeks ago, I was here to request volunteers because I need them over a four-day period. And tonight, I'm back here to thank the city and the community for their efforts. Our ceremony is unlike what you see on your TV on Memorial Day in the morning, where they hand a volunteer 50 flags and say, "Walk down that row, put one in the ground in front of a marker, and you're done." And it's over very quick. We have 4,400 veterans randomly located among 33,000 graves at Loma Vista. So it's a big challenge. We have 125 charts, each with 25 to 40 names on it, and we have volunteers who come out to do that work on Saturday, but the work starts on Friday. We have to preposition those 4,400 crosses and all the other support equipment that's necessary. And I want to totally thank our landscape crew from the city, Arturo Loza, Gilbert Corillo, and Cesar Pinado. They come with their lift truck, work hard for, you know, the whole time there, just do a tremendous job representing the city. The other volunteers are even, wow, those guys really work hard, and we want to thank them. They do all the heavy lifting. We have pickup trucks that can come out and help us, and we also had a big help this year from the Fullerton JROTC cadets. So we were able to complete that effort in two and a half hours. It's usually three and a half, so we were very happy with that. On Saturday is when the volunteers come to place the flags and crosses. We had about 200 show up to honor the 4,400 graves. We had great refreshments provided by Halmed Fastening Systems over from State College Boulevard. They've been doing this for several years, led by Rosie Gomez, the HR director. They brought about 15 people to do that, and when they finished serving everybody with refreshments, they went out and did some graves. So they were a huge help throughout the day. So that took care of Saturday. On Tuesday, everything has to get picked up. So again, we have volunteers come out, the city crew led by Arturo were there, and we had a big help again from the JROTC cadets, some of who came even though they had finals that morning. They came and worked an hour with us, and eighteen ages can move a lot faster than us older folks, so they can cover a lot of territory. So we really appreciate them, and Colonel Mike Albertson, who got them out there. We were all clear by 9:30, which we were very happy about. Then we checked at the community center, where all those flags have to be ironed, rolled, folded, put back in containers. Found out only seven people had showed up. Usually, we have about 20. So I corralled all the guys that had worked up at Loma Vista, said, "Come on, couple more hours. We have to go over and help there." So we got everybody over there. We completed at 2:30. I want to thank those volunteers who started at 8 and never took a break hardly to go until 2:30, till we finished that all up. The ceremony on Monday starts with Loma Vista sending some people out about 4:00 in the morning to put those large ceremonial flags along Bassett Cherry and on the way into Loma Vista. And they also did a great job with the limited parking that was available this year. The police department, we thank them for providing the escort for the speaker. And then our speaker was just tremendous, Brigadier General David Smith of retired Air Force and now with the California State Guard. He gave a fantastic 12-minute speech without referring to a single note, and he just took the mic and spoke to, like, everyone individually, and people came up to me after me saying, "I thought he was talking to me." You know, he was so good. He got a standing ovation, well-deserved, and he stayed, took a picture with anybody that wanted to. And I want to also thank all the city participants that were there. Firefighter of the Year Mitch Hasiki led the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Fernando Villacandia, the opening prayer. Lieutenant Bogart handled the flag raising and gun salute with his team. Tapson Echo, we have that live. We're one of the few places that have live taps and echo. And that's Stephen Anna Plett, who's been doing that for many years. They moved to Bakersfield during this hiatus, but when I reached out to them, they said, "Of course we'll be there." They drove from Bakersfield that morning to participate. We had the Fullerton Army, Troy Navy, JROTC cadets, Fullerton American Legion Post 142, our two outstanding vocalists, Dave Dino and Kristen Romero. Dave came from his new home in Tennessee because he likes this program so much and it means so much to him. He came from Tennessee. Now, that's pretty significant. Mayor, thank you for representing the city with the presentation of the POW MIA rose. Every veteran who attended had an opportunity to have his photo taken and was presented with a thank you card and PIN, and they'll all get those, thanks to a generous donation we get every year from Rotary Club of Fullerton that covers the expenses of that. If you want to see Brigadier General Smith's speech or hear Dave and Crystal's vocals, you can go to our website, www.a v m a fullerton.org. And this is why I think we're the only place in the state that I've seen that does this kind of a ceremony. And General Joe Dunford, who was our speaker in 2010, 2010, he said, "We can be very proud." He said, "I've been all over the world in my 30 years in the Marine Corps. I've never seen anything like this." And he went on to be Commandant of the Marine Corps and then Chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff. So I think he's an authority on these kinds of ceremonies. And Fullerton, I think, should be very proud of this and be happy to answer any questions.
Sir, I would agree with you, and the former Joint Chief of Staff's assessment that Fullerton is singular in its wholesome presentation, credit to you. Kudos to all the wonderful volunteers and the supporters of this event. It is a tremendous amount of work, and you do it brilliantly, really represent the city with great honor and the military with great prestige. Thank you very much for all you do, sir.
Thank you.
I have one comment, if I may, as well. It's always an excellent event, and this year was no exception. And after not having the privilege over the last couple of years, it was very nice to be there. I just had one question for you. It seemed to me that on the 21-gun salute, that there was more flash and more smoke than is typical. Was there a change made there?
I would refer to Chief Dunn for that part. I, you know, I just call it to happen. Chief?
No, sir. Maybe the ammo was a little bit older than previously, but no, no other change.
Sat around for a couple of years of pandemic, I guess.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Good job, Ed. Very good.
Thank you.
We'll now hear public comments on non-agendized items. If members of the public wish to make comments, please line up to my right, your left, and we'll start there. Do we have, Madam City Clerk, do we have comments on Zoom as well?
We have no hands raised in Zoom.
Very good. So we'll go ahead and start in chambers. Mr. Harrison, good evening, sir.
My name is Todd Harrison, and I am one of the endangered residents of Rancho La Paz Mobile Home Park. Hello again, Mr. Mayor and council members. As you sit up there tonight, wrestling with the financial issues of the deficit Fullerton has to live with, be grateful and warned. Do I really need to say more than Anaheim? Well, yes, I do, and I have my three minutes to do so. The old saying about power corrupting may be correct, but here in the capitalist United States, the power is based on money. It's easy to say that this legal, the legal mess, the politicians and influences of Anaheim are facing is the result of there being too much easy money available to feed raw greed on their city council. Easy, but wrong. Anaheim is an example writ large of what can happen to any city where influence and money seek their special favors. It's a classic slippery slope, is it not? It takes moral courage not to give better access to those who support you financially in some way. You can wrap it in all kinds of justifications, but however done by direct campaign donations, packs, anonymous flowers on doorknobs, or the many other overt and covert ways that support reaches you, it is still corruption. Some past the money take are legal, but even those can stink of buying favors for money. At least illegal past are visible, and those that give a damn can track the dollars that flow from the evil to the greedy. Bit by bit, as we examine the money flow from those such as Mr. Saunders, we'll learn who is looking fairly at the issues and who has been paid, who has been biased for money. I point no fingers at this council, but I do raise one in admonishment. Corruption stinks enough, we know, even before the evidence comes out, who is moral and who is not. Never mind the FBI and all the rest. Beware of the informed voters who see what you do and will vote out those who fail to temptation. Unlike the long-suffering residents of Anaheim, we won't wait for the indictments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment, please.
Can we have our speakers line up on the wall by the microphone, so you can just go right up after the speaker before he's done?
Go ahead.
My name is Brandon, and I own Mulberry Street Restaurant. I'm here today to comment on the orange barricades installed on Wilshire. First off, I'd like to applaud the city for taking action during the pandemic and supporting the local businesses by allowing us to use a public space for outdoor dining. This was a lifeline for my business and all the downtown restaurants over the past two years. The new walk on Wilshire was a happy accident that sprouted from the pandemic. The Walk on Wilshire established a nice and pleasant tree-lined promenade, making the section of the city more walkable and pedestrian-friendly, bringing foot traffic and business to this area of downtown and eliminating much of the undesired transient activity. Locals and visitors are now drawn to the boutiques on Wilshire for shopping and then can visit over breakfast at Rialto, grab tea at Green Bliss, or have dinner at Mulberry, all while enjoying the newly created and beautiful public outdoor setting. The installation of the orange barricades has severely compromised the attractive and pleasant ambiance that the Walk on Wilshire once provided. Most people do not understand what the orange barricades are for, and they assume both the road and the businesses on Wilshire are closed now. My staff and I field calls and questions daily from customers asking if we are still open during construction. People will call and ask how to access our entrance because it does not appear accessible if driving by. Where feedback before was very positive, the feedback we receive now is that guests feel like they're sitting next to a highway and that we have destroyed the outdoor dining experience. None of the businesses on Wilshire anticipated that this would be the outcome when the city reclaimed the space for bicyclists. I believe that with the city council's help, we can come up with a solution that benefits bicyclists, the general public, and the businesses that are now paying for the space. A solution that does not involve orange barricades, but options that would allow the businesses and bicyclists to coexist and preserve the atmosphere. I hope the city council will reconsider the current setup. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment.
Chris Norby, 2820 Street in Fullerton. I am also here to call the council to take down this Day-Glo Berlin Wall, which I think was mistakenly put down the middle of Wilshire. I'm speaking to you as an outdoor diner, as a bicyclist, and as chairman of the Traffic and Transportation Commission. As an outdoor diner, this barricade has really ruined the ambiance of Wilshire. The Walk on Wilshire now has become the wall on Wilshire. When I first saw it, I thought, well, they're redoing the sewer line, or maybe the Trump border wall was placed 100 yards, 100 miles too far north. As a bicyclist, I'm embarrassed that this barricade was put up there supposedly on behalf of bicyclists. Bicyclists know how to navigate outdoor dining areas. The outdoor dining was there for two years without any kind of problems. Bicyclists can legally use any sidewalk in Fullerton, and they can navigate those sidewalks that have people on them or those streets. We're not talking about the Tour de France going through Wilshire and the barricades needed for that. This is an overreaction. I think the council didn't realize what they had approved and really needs to take a look at it. As chairman of the Traffic and Circulation Commission, I want to say that we had absolutely nothing to do with this, which was kind of surprising, because I think when you look at the future of Wilshire, whether to close it or keep it open, and I know that there are arguments on both sides, reopening it or keeping it closed, you really need to use the commission system. We are the Traffic and Transportation Commission, and anything that affects traffic and transportation really, I think, needs to go through us, and had it done so, there's no way we would have approved this Day-Glo Checkpoint Charlie in the middle of, in the middle of Wilshire. My understanding is it was put up based on what I think was a misunderstanding of council direction. I haven't talked to anybody on the council that says, "This is what you support, and this is what you want." And I think you really need to take a look at it, and in the words of President Reagan, addressing Gorbachev back in the late 80s, "Tear down this wall."
Chair Norby Wilson.
My name is John Waters and I'm a partner in Stadium Tavern, Stadium, Fullerton Bruco is what we call it now. I just wanted to add my voice to, to this conversation also in that it's really an eyesore down there and, and I don't think it's, it's, uh, looks good for the city and I think there's got to be some more options we can look at. You don't see this on the bike path at Hermosa Beach. I'm sure we can come up with something that, that looks, uh, better and, and works better for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment, please.
Hello, I'm Leah Waters. I'm also one of the partners in Fullerton Brewing Company, and we are so proud to have our business in this beautiful city of Fullerton. And we've been so blessed to have been allowed to do the outdoor dining during the COVID situation. But the last few weeks, the street on Wilshire has just become an absolute eyesore. We get complaints and questions from our customers every day and we just have to explain what happened the best we can. I really can't compete with the two previous speakers before me, but I certainly share their opinions. And it's just absolutely become visually offensive. It's, it's, it's just a really unfortunate situation and I hope you will consider redesigning it or taking it down. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment, please.
Hello, my name is Jessica. I am a server. I'm a waitress. I work on the street where the bike lane is in place. And when it was put in, it already had graffiti on it. So I do think the whole system needs to be redesigned. Maybe we can get a better bike lane painted on the street, maybe? I don't know. We get complaints all the time, all the time. And the orange barricade doesn't come down.
Thank you. Next comment, please.
City Council, hi Chief. My name is Roland Traddell, local business owner, family business. Family's been in the city since nineteen fifty-eight. Parents raised ten of us here in the city. I'm a frequent visitor downtown. I live in the city. I support local business. When COVID hit, all I went out and spread the word to support, support local businesses. So I'm a regular at Mulberry Street. My girlfriend's been going there since, I believe, eighty-four when they opened. It's definitely changed the vibe a lot. So all the negative energy you're hearing with the customers that are going there, we're, they're feeling it. So I'm here to support them. I'll spend money there as often as I can, but the energies definitely changed a lot. So whatever you guys could do to help out, uh, would appreciate it. Thank you.
Very well. Thank you. Ms. Kaluzny, good evening.
Thank you. Judith Kaluzny, I live at Malden and Whiting, and I walk to the post office often and other places downtown. And when I first saw this, this is ugly as sin. This is just horrible. I mean, it's just, it's gross. And it's offensive to me to even walk down that street. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pakage, good evening, sir.
Good evening. I have to concur with everybody that it just, it looks ugly. My wife drove down there and said, what the heck did they put there? And that's not, not her words, but, uh, you can imagine. And we just don't go there anymore. It's just, we used to go there all the time. Now we don't go there anymore because it looks silly and it's just lost its ambience. That's not what I want to talk about. Logistics Center on Orange Thorpe. How many of you have visited that center, have seen it? It's enormous. It's huge. It's enormous. Have you seen the Mohammed being built? I know the building, it's a logistics center, is in Armors, uh, District, but I hope you Northsiders come down and, 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 and from your elite areas and come down and see that because it's really just going to be a huge traffic mess when it gets built. I mean, what does the logistics center do? They bring in big trucks, unload stuff into the, into the areas that are being rented, and then they bring, then they send, those rented areas send in little trucks to pick up the stuff and go to the different areas. So you're going to have tons of trucks coming off to ninety-one, fifty-seven, all that stuff. Then you're going to have a bunch of trucks flowing through, uh, the city of Fullerton, and it's going to just be a traffic mess. And I, I looked at the, um, uh, traffic, uh, report, uh, the very inept, that traffic report that was issued. Um, it, it, the traffic, it only goes up to the, um, um, the fire station. It doesn't go to like Commonwealth, which is going to be to hit, hit the, the breadth of the product, of the, of the traffic and everything. So, uh, go down there. It's a mess right now, right now, it happened. They've, 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 um, redid the streets on, on Orange Thorpe in front of the building. The streets are crappy. They're crappy. They're already sagging and everything, so they did a bad job on that. Come on, we could do better in this. And it's you who has to oversee this. Okay. Last week in the OC Register, they had a nice report on, um, contributions, campaign contributions by businesses and everything. It was very interesting. And it, it tells the tale of all the different county, your neighbor cities, how, how they, they, they have controlled this somewhat. And then they, then they gave a grade F to six cities in the county.
Thank you, sir.
I'm done? Okay. And one of them is Fullerton.
Thank you, sir.
So you're the best city council we can buy.
Next.
Hello, my name is Kurt Johnston. I guess I should also comment on the bicycle lane because I ride, ride through it pretty much every night. It's a lot of fun because it feels like I'm at the Long Beach Grand Prix when I'm riding my electric scooter through there. But, but I used to navigate through there on the sidewalk and there wasn't any problem. And also, I never see, I've never seen another bicycler in that lane when I've, I've ridden through there, so I don't think there's a lot of bicycle traffic. I'd like to also mention about the drinking fountains. Post-COVID, the, the fountain, the drinking fountain at the Plaza Marketplace has not been turned on. And now the, uh, the fountains at the train station, both of those are turned off, plus the one on the inside of the station. So I think, uh, that should be looked at by Parks and Recreation. And I'd like to mention, um, some of the sidewalks around the downtown. Some of the bricks are popping out and I notice when it does get fixed, uh, it's replaced with asphalt. Even large sections of sidewalk are replaced with black asphalt, which is for really the kind of material you want to use in the street. But I feel like, um, the sidewalks could be repaired with cement and bricks to keep the downtown looking, um, nice. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment, please.
Hello, good afternoon, Mayor, councilmen. Ekle Nusin, longtime resident here in the Fullerton. And I come here, you know, um, very full of, I'm so grateful to our police chief. On May twenty-seventh, you see, we were, a lot of our neighbors, we were advocating because, uh, the Maple Center, which is in Lemon Park. And that park, it was, um, it was now well taken care because you know what? We had so much need. But thank you for your initiative, Chief Dunn, and for all the personnel of the city that went to help to clean up this park. You see Kelly Fritzl, Judy Booth, Make My Way, Dave Bishop, our Captain Raiders, Captain Arana, and our leaders from our community center and all the people that came to help. Thank you so much because we always come here, you know, to talk about the necessities of the city, but few people go and help and do the work. And this is, you know, what I really appreciate for people like Chief Dunn, all the organizations, our community leaders. This is the eighth park we are cleaning in our city, and we do it because we want, we have so much pride in our community. And what we're doing with our community leaders is then be the role model for all the members of our city to go and do the same work, to adopt a park, to help the city. We are in, we are in such a need and we need people helping and not just, you know, complaining. And that is what we're doing, showing our work and our support to our city. Please, I would like to invite you to go to our museum. We have a new exhibit for all the artists that we have in Fullerton. It's a wonderful opportunity for all of us to feel so proud for our artists in Fullerton. It was a wonderful experience and I hope so many of our families have that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell, good evening.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, my name is Curtis Campbell, activist for the homeless and the veterans. This evening, once again, I would like to share with you my thoughts on the Fullerton homeless and veterans community. On May the eleventh, the Fullerton Observer came out with the twenty, twenty-two point in time count. The article stated that the city of Fullerton has around two hundred and seventy-two homeless, uh, people with, with seven sheltered, and about two hundred and two homeless people are still living on the streets of Fullerton. Many of the Fullerton homeless and veterans have set their goals to get into some form of housing this year, whether it be a navigation center, emergency shelter, an apartment, or tiny house, or a safe parking program. The Goodman Center, uh, like, the Goodman Logistics Center, building number four, located in the city's Fullerton SB two industrial by right overlay zone for emergency shelters. This building is around, one of these buildings are, is around, uh, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand square feet and is, and is currently available for lease. The building will lease for around three hundred and sixty thousand a month, which comes to about four point three million a year. This building could easily have up to a thousand beds for Orange County homeless and veterans community. Our North Service Planning Area, the North Spa includes thirteen cities, which is Anaheim, Brail, Brainer Park, Cypress, Fullerton, La Palma, Los Amigos, Orange, Placentia, Rosemark, Staden, Villa Park, and Yerba Linda. Mary's Kitchen on five seventeen East Struck Avenue in the city of Orange is in our spa. They have until June the tenth, twenty twenty-two, to find a new location in order to continue serving the homeless community. It's time we welcome Mary's Kitchen to the city of Fullerton Goodman Logistics Center for, building four. The Goodman Group and the Prologics are two, two major billion-dollar companies that buys large warehouses in our communities. Many of these properties are former military bases, shopping center, and aerospace properties. It is true that the Goodman and, and the Prologic company usually are, or should I say, always prefer to lease to Amazon Corporation. The Amazon Corporation has an excellent history of working with the homeless community via nonprofit organizations. Considering that many, considering that many of the Amazons are, are properties are also located in the SB two industrial by right overlay zones for emergency shelters, it's time that we start working together in order to better serve the Fullerton residents and our homeless veterans. Thank you. Also, can I pull item two, ten, sixteen? And also the bicycle lane, um, the big orange barriers, y-yes, if we could find some other way to do that, because I don't even want to look at those when I pass by, but they make you look at them. You know, I'm just driving down the street and they're like, hey, look at me. So it is a big distraction, so, but I appreciate the safety part of it. But if we can find another way to, to be safe, that would be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So the member of the public has asked to pull item two, ten, sixteen. There's a member of council at that time that would like to pull it, please do so. I got that. Thank you. All right. Mr. Cho, good evening.
Hello, my name is Bernard and I am a Fullerton resident. Mr. Jung, like the Anaheim mayor who just resigned because of an FBI investigation into corruption, your intimate relationship with developer Tony Bishala should be investigated for corruption. You have practically canceled a state-funded full public trail project just for his benefit. And who knows what other quid pro quos you promised him? This council majority seems to believe it's invincible because you have Bishala's blog and a few blind followers who cover up for you. But people are watching. We know your truth. Happy Pride Month. Go Bruins.
Next comment. While we're doing that, we'll go to Zoom. Anybody on Zoom? All right, very well. Ms. Milton.
Thank you. Warn everybody on audio. Good evening, any, everyone. Hooray, Mr. Norby. I agree with you a hundred percent. I look at them as orange, or bright orange trash cans. So, uh, but anyway, my reason for speaking is I want to thank the Fullerton Police Department for, uh, uh, helping me in a very, very stressful situation. My, uh, satchel fell off my walker and I didn't feel the seventeen-pound satchel, uh, falling off or hitting my knees. And I was, when I realized it, I was really upset because it's my comfort blanket, um, my comfort blanket in case of an emergency because I have all kinds of things in there that will help me if I get stranded anywhere. And a gentleman who was trying to help me so much, he mentioned the police. And I go, oh my gosh, somebody could be sent over, uh, to the Transportation Center to see if it fell off as I was getting, uh, on or off one of the buses. And it was quite a long time, uh, because of our situation, before the police came and they talked to the situation. And there were two officers. Unfortunately, I have their cards, but you know us old fogies, uh, how easily we forget names. And, but I do want to say thank you, thank you, thank you. Because when I was sitting in the back of the police car, uh, the officer said, do you want to hear the good news or the good news? And this had been at least two hours after I realized that my satchel was missing, that an officer called him and said, uh, that my satchel had been found. And it was found totally intact and I could not believe this. But if it wasn't for this total stranger saying, I'm going to call the police to make sure you're okay, I wouldn't have thought of having them run over and see if my satchel was there. Nothing of value in it. It was the, the only thing, it would have taken me so long to replace everything. And under the situation I've been in lately, uh, it would have taken me quite a long time. So anyway, I want to thank you, thank you, thank you for all of that. And, uh, as I say, it's, it was really, really great that they took the time to go over to the Transportation Center, uh, to check to see if my satchel was still there, and it was still there, not a thing missing. Thank you.
Thank you. With no further comments in chambers, we'll move to, uh, staff reports. Mr. City Manager, anything to report, sir?
Mayor Jung and City Council members, um, nothing specific to report, but I will follow up on a couple of the comments. One is the orange barriers. We have heard from both city council members as well as the public on the concern, so we're looking into alternatives and we're going to try, we're working towards replacing those with some other more appreciable type of barrier. Secondly, on the water fountains or drinking fountains, I'm not aware of that situation. I'll look into it here. I do know many communities, drinking fountains have been turned off because of the health and safety regarding COVID, and that's likely what the case is here. And then in, on the Orange Thorpe, I will have the pavement conditions for the new paving there, um, have it looked at to make sure that the, the company, the paving company did an adequate job.
Very well, thank you. We'll go to council reports. We'll begin this evening with Councilmember Dunlap. Mr. Dunlap.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick items. Would like to both thank and congratulate the Fullerton Sunrise Rotary on their recent fundraiser, benefiting the All the Arts for All the Kids Foundation. They were able to raise more than thirty thousand dollars in this recent fundraising effort, uh, and that's all to benefit, uh, this great program for Fullerton, you know, Fullerton kids, uh, and Fullerton schools. And I think what's really great about this, um, they were able to put it on, I guess, sort of having emerged from COVID, fundraising efforts were down, and so they're very excited to get back up and looking to build on their success for next year. I would also like to especially thank and congratulate the Fullerton High School Baseball Team on their championship season. Not only did they win the Freeway League Championship, but they advanced to both the CIF regional and sectional finals. Unfortunately, they were unsuccessful in, in, you know, both of those games against Tesoro, but they put up a great fight, um, and they just demonstrated a lot of grit and a lot of heart, and I think that's something we should all be proud of as Fullertonians. So, uh, my hat off to them, uh, the players and their coaches on a great season. And, uh, that concludes my report.
We'll go to Councilmember Silva for his report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, uh, Mr. Dunlap, you took one of my items off there, but yeah, congratulations again to the Fullerton High School Baseball Team for their run at the CIF Championship, like you said, and the state region. you said, and the state regionals. Great job, guys. And I also just want to also thank again Mr. Ed Paul for putting on the Memorial Day celebration. That's always one of the best I've seen. I've seen a few around north of the county, and that is one of the best ones. Congratulations again. And then, lastly, where's my, no, that was my two things. So, Mr. Mayor?
Very good, sir. Mr. Mayor Proton.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I failed at our last council meeting to mention something I think that was quite significant. Our, the Arborland School, which exists up in Amherst Heights here in Fullerton, was involved and hosted a red carpet movie premiere of The Old Man and Two Mountains. This was an English-language version of a film that was released in China, throughout China, in 2020. And what was significant about this, it was an animated, a fast-paced animated film. It was held at the Krikorian Theater in Buena Park. And what was significant about it were two things, really. Mark Handler, who was former creative director of Disney China, was the chief script writer to develop the plot based on an old fable in China. And Arborland Montessori Elementary School students auditioned and were trained for voice dubbing roles in the English-language version of The Old Man and Two Mountains. It was an enjoyable event. It was something that I think puts many of these stellar students at Arborland on the fast track in terms of the entertainment industry and also in forms of presentation and participation in cultural events. That was on May 14th. And also, Mr. Mayor, I was privileged to attend just, May 28th, Saturday, May 28th, the 100th anniversary of Boy Scout Troop 292 in Fullerton. It was held at Hillcrest Park at the Isaac Walton Lodge and areas surrounding. It was very well attended. In fact, Hillcrest Park was full of scouts just about in every, every nook and cranny of the park at that time. But I do want to commend all who hosted this event. 100-year anniversaries only come around once in any of our lifetimes, for the most part. Some people are fortunate that they could actually attend two, but they'd be too young and then too old probably to appreciate it. We have had recently two Fullerton Boy Scout troops celebrate 100th anniversaries, so I commend them. On the waterfront, as director at Orange County Water District, I was also invited and privileged to attend the dedication of the nation's largest PFAS water treatment plant, which was opened in Yorba Linda at the Yorba Linda Water District. This is, you know, Fullerton was the first. We actually have the first such ion exchange units utilizing resin to remove PFAS from our water, which is a requirement now. Orange County Water District has partnered with many different cities and water districts throughout our region, the upper two-thirds of Orange County. And our plant, the first in the nation, is called Kim One, and it's on Kimberly Avenue in Fullerton. It has four large resin ion exchange tanks, which comprise that facility, and it's been working quite well, a little less than what was projected. But it's very fortunate that we've had it there to help reduce the amount of imported water that we've had to use in our city, and to help, longer term, to prevent the closure of any more wells, any more Fullerton city wells due to the presence of PFAS. The Yorba Linda Plant, where Fullerton has the four units, this is the nation's largest, they have 22 units there. And it was a very good event, very well-attended. A lot of kudos to the Orange County Water District, who is fronting by the time we're done for all these different water retailers, nearly half a billion dollars to move rapidly and really be the leader in this regard in helping to remove that threat from our groundwater. And that's pretty much it. That concludes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Our nation's history with gun violence and the discourse associated with it hasn't always been a straight line. And in light of the heartbreaking events of the past month, I thank God for the joys of parenthood and my children's willingness to put up with their rather new goal, new role in governance, and the general public having great access to their father. I am consistently reminded that the plan of governing is oftentimes slow, cumbersome, does not always match our own short-sighted desires for immediate action. But I can assure you that while it has been selfishly frustrating at times, this past year, as a member of this elected body, has deepened my faith in good governance. We all have seen a good many hardships this past two years as a result of the pandemic. I'm sure for our residents and advocates, participating in our local democracy has not always been pleasant. Lively debates are a valued part of our collective effort to build a more perfect union. It is because of the conviction of these three men up here with me, that our dedicated staff, all of whom serve the same Fullerton residents, that our city is on a better path today than it was a year ago. And while I petitioned all of our residents to find the humanity in us all and pause the negative corrosiveness with the events of last month in mind, I find an urgency to keep focused on the many things we have in common rather than the few things we may not. Perhaps if we start with humility and admit that we are not infallible men or women, we can exercise patience and civility so we can continue to run on behalf of the city and not be weary. Finally, an update on a few things, true to our word. We, as a council, have worked these past two weeks in great earnest to find the $4,000 worth of donations or sponsorships that we have committed as a body during the last meeting for the Fullerton Day of Music, a valued event for our community. Gives me great pleasure to announce this evening that not only have we met that $4,000 mark, but we have surpassed it and are nearing $10,000. So I want to thank all of the sponsors and the donors that have rallied to this event and understand the importance of it for our community. Also, the governor's office has graciously asked Fullerton to take a leadership role in advocating for its $14 billion CARES Court initiative, along with our staff and city manager. I've called upon the mayors of Orange County to join in our support and commitment to invest in a new framework to get people with mental health and substance use disorders the critical support and care they need. These efforts are to curb some of the underlying foundations of homelessness, incarceration, or worse, and will build 55,000 new housing units and allocate a necessary $10 billion annually for behavioral health services as well. So I want to thank this evening Mayor Sarmiento of Santa Ana, Mayor Buckman of Mission Viejo, Mayor Harper of Fountain Valley, and Mayor Khan of Irvine, and others for joining us in their strong support of these efforts. Transforming how we treat mental illness and substance abuse requires dedicated long-term funding and a daily commitment to see beyond the here and now. Again, we are in a very serious drought that shows no signs of ending, so please conserve water as it is life. And with that, we have the consent calendar, if there's any members of council that wish to pull an item. If not, I'd seek a motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to, I think, pull item two that Mr. Gamble requested, and item seven for myself.
I'd move the balance.
All right. And if you don't, if you don't mind, Councilmember Silva, we'll do the two and seven at the conclusion of the meeting. Is that all right with you?
That's fine.
All right, very well. Madam City Clerk, please call it all.
Councilmember Dunlap.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Whitaker.
Aye.
Mayor Jung.
Aye. I did want to announce to the public that we do have an item number 16 on the agenda, and that item is being continued this evening. I will ask the city attorney to give us more details of what he can anyhow, but item 16 has been continued this evening as there has been positive activity between the property owner and the city to reach an agreement on this matter, and I will afford the city attorney at this time an opportunity to further clarify what he can.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we've had positive engagement in terms of communication with the property owner. We are seeking to have a resolution in a way that provides for the removal of the encroachment upon the city's property and avoid litigation. We're heading in that direction. We believe that we can reach an agreement to accomplish that task, and we'll bring you back both a agreement of settlement, hopefully, and also an agreement asking the council to terminate the long-term relationship regarding the encroachment.
Very well. Now we have a public hearing item. It's the annual operating budget, scheduled fees and charges, and annual appropriation limit for fiscal year 2022, '23. Director Chang, you've got a presentation for us.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may, just forgot one thing, two seconds.
Of course, sir.
Do you mind if we end the meeting in honor of the Uvalde kids and teachers that lost their lives recently?
Absolutely, sir. We'll call on you to do that, absolutely.
Thank you.
He's signing into the Zoom so he can get it presented.
Director Chang, this was supposed to be a 10-minute presentation. You're three minutes in already.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I did want to bring up one point. I'm going to request that the city council, when you consider the budget, that you continue the parks and rec fees to the June 21st, because we have some information we still need to get further on that before the council takes action on the parks and rec fees.
Very well, we'll do that accordingly. Thank you, sir.
Should I just go ahead and start? Okay. So I'm actually going to start the presentation, and we'll get the slides loaded on Zoom. So, good evening, mayor and city council. Tonight's public hearing is to present the fiscal year 2223 budget, the appropriations limit, and the fee schedule, the balance of the fee schedule outside of the parks and rec fees for formal adoption. Before we begin, I'd like to thank all departments, all department heads and their respective teams, David Grantham, Stephen Avalos, and Cindy Barrios, for their level of effort and support provided in the development of the fiscal year 2223 budget. So, on slide two, we do present a high-level budget process overview. The budget development process officially began back in January under a Maintenance of Effort, or MOE, budget approach, which incorporates merit and salary step increases, known and anticipated wage and benefit increases such as CalPERS and health benefit changes, service and cost of goods increases per existing agreements or per a, subject to a 2.5% cap, as well as internal service fund cost allocation increases. At the April budget study session, we presented the general fund as well as the capital improvement plan budgets for fiscal year 2223. Tonight, I will provide a high-level overview of the all-funds budget and will also touch on the general fund as well as the capital improvement plan budgets. The fiscal year 2223 budget was developed in keeping with city council priorities of public safety, infrastructure, and community and economic development. So as seen on slide three, the all-funds budget includes the general fund, enterprise funds such as water and airport, the special revenue funds, which are typically restricted for governmental purposes, the capital improvement plan, and the successor agency. The all-funds expenditure budget of $248.8 million is supported by projected revenues of $243.6 million. The shortfall of expenditures over revenues are typically timing-related and will be supported with transfers and available fund balances. General fund makes up of about 46% of the citywide all-funds budget and is followed by the capital improvement plan budget at 18% of the citywide all-funds budget. The capital improvement plan budget includes citywide infrastructure funds, projects, including street rehabilitation. So on slide four, I'm going to pivot and will kind of provide a high-level overview of the general fund budget. As presented at the study session, the budget carries forward the budget reductions enacted in the current 2122 fiscal year and incorporates the following increases: fire departments, unified command structure, approved labor agreements, and the liability insurance program changes. On slide three, general fund revenues is projected at $113.6 million. The slide shows that the top two general fund revenues are property tax at $52 million or 46% of general fund revenues, and sales tax at $29 million or 26% of general fund revenues. As seen on slide six, general fund expenditures is budgeted at $114.3 million. And as seen on this slide, general fund supports public safety, which includes fire and police, which makes up about 73% of the general fund budget, followed by human and leisure services provided by parks and recreation and library, as well as public works each at 8% of the general fund budget, and community and economic development at 5% of the general fund budget. Switching now to slide seven, this slide presents general fund as of the current 2122 fiscal year, as well as the proposed fiscal year 2223 general fund budget's impacts on projected ending general fund balance. As of the budget study session, as seen in the second column labeled "projected fiscal year 2122," general fund is projected to end the current fiscal year with an ending fund balance of $18.5 million, of which $17.8 million is, per city council direction, to be assigned as contingency reserves. This $18.5 million is the beginning fund balance for the proposed fiscal year 2223 general fund budget, as seen in the third column. The net change in fund balance for 2223, as highlighted in the second green highlighted row, is calculated by projected revenues of $113.6 million, less budgeted expenditures of $114.3 million, plus net transfers of $1.6 million, resulting in a positive net change in fund balance of about $1 million. Transfers out of $1.5 million is to account for general fund earmarked for infrastructure. Submitted for fiscal year 2223 general fund, the budget is balanced and continues to retain a contingency reserve at 17%. Next slide, please. As indicated earlier on slide three, the all-funds budget includes $45 million for infrastructure improvements. $12 million is budgeted for street rehabilitation projects and includes $5.5 million of the $13.1 million of ARPA obligated by city council for streets and roads. $2.1 million of ARPA is budgeted in the current 2122 fiscal year for street projects in the Marion area and for residential slurry and rehabilitation projects. These latter rehabilitation projects are actually on this evening's agenda under item number 13, which was approved on consent. The remaining $5.5 million of ARPA obligated for street rehabilitation will be included in subsequent year budgets. Significant street rehabilitation projects include Orange Thorpe from State College Boulevard to Placentia Avenue and associated road between Rolling Hills Drive to Imperial Highway. Next, $23 million is budgeted for utility infrastructure improvements, with the largest component to address the city's aging water infrastructure at $18 million from the Water Enterprise Fund and $2 million from city council-approved ARPA for water main replacements. Significant utility projects include water main replacements on associated road from Rolling Hills Drive to Imperial Highway and from Yorba Linda Drive to Bastian Cherie, and sewer main improvements in the Barris Fern residential area. To maximize budget, the city typically performs utility improvements in conjunction with street rehabilitation projects. Next slide. $2.9 million is budgeted for traffic system improvements, which includes new traffic signals, equipment replacement, and necessary upgrades. Some significant traffic system projects include Euclid Street and Yorba Linda Boulevard traffic signal synchronization. Also in the capital improvement plan budget is $250,000 for airport infrastructure, as well as $6.2 million budgeted for parks and city facility infrastructure improvements. Next slide. So as shown early on attachment three of the agenda report, the city is within its annual appropriations limit. Attachments four and five of the agenda report present the changes in fees and charges. Their primary changes for fees and charges are those that were approved by city council in the current 2122 fiscal year, as well as some administrative fee changes to parks and recreation and library fees. As directed earlier by the city manager, staff requests that city council approve the balance of the scheduled fees and charges and continue the parks and recreation fees to the next city council meeting. Next slide. So with that, I have concluded the public hearing, and it's recommended that city council approve and adopt the following resolutions: a resolution approving and adopting the proposed operating budget for fiscal year 2223 and appropriating the funds necessary to meet the expenditure set forth therein; a resolution adopting the annual appropriations limit for fiscal year 2223 pursuant to Article 13B of the California State Constitution; and '23 pursuant to Article 13B of the California State Constitution; and a resolution approving the city's schedule of fees and charges for municipal services and repealing Resolution Number 2021-36, which is the prior year schedule of fees and charges, except for the Parks and Recreation fees, which will be brought forward on a separate resolution at the next City Council meeting. And with that, staff are available for questions.
Very well. Thank you, Director Chang, on a very concise presentation. I will now open the public hearing on this matter. We will now hear public comments on this item. So, members of the public that wish to comment in chambers, please do so to your left, my right. Mr. Pakic, good evening again, sir.
Good evening again. Thank you, Mayor Jung, for the greetings. I appreciate that. First off, I want to commend a lot of work that's being done to create this budget. Now, I went through the summaries and everything, and it was a lot of work. And I, as a past CPA who's done many of these budgets like this, it's a lot of work. But I will bring up two things that I'm concerned about. Number one, when I looked at A1 on the budget summaries, we have a $5 million deficit. And I believe that we probably used the ARPA fundings and some other things to handle that. But my concern is that what's going to happen next year and the following year? We're going to have these, if we're having budgets deficits, once we get done with the ARPA funds, what are we going to do? And so, I just bring it up as a concern and a thing. Now, the second thing is, Mr. Dunlap and Mr. Whitaker, you got $12 million for your infrastructure. Now, I remember, I've been attending a lot of these meetings and budget meetings, and one of the things that came up is that you could only do so much roads, fixtures, in this city before you just stifle it. And so, I'm concerned that $12 million, when we've been spending $5 million or $6 million or $8 million, is going to do some stifling of traffic. And I'm happy to see that in the north side is going to be most of the infrastructure, so you get to have that fun of being involved in traffic and road closures. So, I bring that up as a warning of, let's just make sure when we plan the roads that we talk, we make sure we have a plan that's not going to stifle the city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next comment. Well, Mr. Cho goes to the mic. Is there anything on Zoom?
Nothing on Zoom.
All right, very well. This will be our final comment as a result. Thank you. Sir, good evening again.
Hello, my name is Bernard, and I am a Fullerton resident. This council majority has been the most careless bunch. Your impulsive and irrational behavior has sent the city into chaos, and the cuts you've made have compromised public safety and services dramatically. You have no real plan, just empty promises you made during your campaigns. This budget is a reactive, bad job using President Biden's ARPA bailout money, not to support our staff and loyal employees as intended, but to buy you a couple years. You also claimed you're against a sales tax, but all I see in this budget is increasing fees on residents and businesses. Fees are taxes we don't get to vote on. But then again, you don't care about truth and transparency. Mr. Jung, your stolen mayoral year is nothing but a true example of a failed, self-serving government. Happy Pride Month. Go Bruins.
All right. With that, translation was, what is that, pay attention? Anyhow, folks, we're going to close this public hearing. We'll bring this back to council.
City Attorney, do we close the public hearing, or do we continue it for the next item? Sorry to interrupt, Mayor.
Sure.
I'm not sure what you're asking.
We are continuing the park and recreation fees to another meeting. Do we close the public hearing tonight or continue?
We will need to, well, we can close the public hearing, except as to the fees portion.
So, we will close the public hearing with, except the park and recreation fees portion of this budget.
We'll keep that open until the next meeting.
We'll move this back to, or bring this back to council. Councilmember Silva, you seem ready, sir.
Yeah, I've got a, just a question for Ms. Chang for clarification. On Slide 7, you talked about transfers out of 1.49. Can you just elaborate on that? You said it was funding that we had to move for infrastructure, road repair?
So, back in 2019, City Council approved an ordinance establishing an infrastructure fund. So, that 1.5 transfer, $1.5 million transfer from general fund to the infrastructure fund is per City Council ordinance.
Okay. So, that was the amount. And that was the, we had said that 50% of, over a specific threshold, we would move.
That's correct.
And so, this is that. Okay. Thank you.
Anything further, sir? At this time, anyhow?
No, I'm good.
Very good. I did want to ask Mr. Grantham to come up, if he would indulge me for a moment, and answer Mr. Pakic's question about what is the maximum amount of road we can do? In good faith, sir.
That is a very good question. You know, obviously, money talks, and if you have a lot of money, you can get a lot of work done. Impacts is, what's an impact to you is a different impact to me. Arterial streets obviously have a much greater impact than residential streets do, in my opinion. Obviously, they are an impact completely. But we, I don't know that I could put an actual number on the number of miles there, but construction is absolutely an impact. But the more residential streets we do, I think people would accept the impacts over the short term to get the long-term benefit.
I see. But arterial-wise, what, 10 miles before we start?
Yeah, I mean, we would obviously, I mean, we obviously, we would move the projects around, so any projects going at the same time would not be next to another project, next to another project. So, you hopefully wouldn't see an increase in congestion because you're combining projects. You would just have the congestion of that single project at that time.
Okay. So, let's say it's 10 miles. What would that cost us if we were doing arterial streets?
Um, yeah, if it's like a grind and overlay, you're probably looking in the 15 to 20 million.
20 million. So, we don't even have enough ARPA money to even do that?
No.
All right. Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we answered Mr. Pakic's questions. The other thing I did have a question on as well, that Mr. Pakic pointed out as well, we asked this in the previous budget study meeting, but I'd like that clarified here. Why are all these projects, or the majority of them, in the north?
The majority of our water main problems are in the north. That's where we have the poorer water condition, soil conditions that are reading to our water mains, which are causing the water main breaks.
All right. Thank you, sir. I appreciate you attending this meeting to just clarify a few things for our residents and our council. Ms. Chang, if you don't mind coming back. So, there is, if we can go to page A8, fund balance summaries. So, you see the asset seizures. We have $358,000, and then it increased to $375,000, right? Am I looking at that correctly?
That $358,000 is the projected beginning fund balance for the year, yes.
Right. Okay. What's the increase to? We're just seizing more property?
The asset seizure money, I believe, and I think Chief Dunn could probably be a little bit more articulate about how we receive those funds from the federal government as well as the state.
Chief, please.
Yes, sir. So, those funds are obtained through the, like, a court process related to narcotics investigations from narcotic offenders. There's two routes in which they can take, either from the state or from the feds. It takes an incredible amount of time. And so, we have a projection of monies that are in the pipeline, but they have to be approved by the court. So, I think the fund balance represents what potentially is out there. There's a lot more that's in the pipeline, but we try not to forecast too far out because ultimately, we don't get anything until the judge adjudicates the case and says it's warranted.
Thank you, sir. I do appreciate that being clarified. Then, there's a traffic state safety amount of $16,000 and some loose change. It increases all the way to $200,000. Not that we're all not in favor of traffic safety, but what is that from?
That is actually money that we receive from the state, from the, from the courts for traffic safety. That $16,000 is what we're planning to carry over from this current fiscal year into the next. We're anticipating to receive that $200,000. That $200,000 that gets transferred to CIP to support the traffic signal maintenance projects.
And then finally, my final one is the liability insurance. We went over that at the previous budget study meeting, but I'd like the public to know. We went from roughly under $1.5 million all the way above now $12 million.
The actual increase to the 22, '23 budget across all citywide funds for liability, the liability insurance fund program is about $4.7 million, of which $2.5 is allocated to general fund. So, the 2.3 of that $4.7 is the actual increase from the prior fiscal year.
It's an enormous amount of money. We talked about it before. I would like it reiterated and explained why we're paying such monumental increase.
I believe our premiums costs have escalated, and I think we have, the city has also adjusted its self-insurance retention amount to a higher dollar limit, requiring additional funds to be held in reserve. So, balance of that and our claims history, I think, is also propagating some of the additional increase.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Dunlop.
Yeah, I think I, you know, my question, the City Manager was able to answer earlier this week, and that was with respect to some of the infrastructure funding that had been asked for and requested in previous discussions. So, really, no comments at this time.
Sir, Mr. Mayor, Protime, anything, sir?
We've been over most of the fine points on this quite a bit. I appreciate that you dealt with the liability insurance issue. And, you know, still, there are structural budget problems here, still for several years, to be felt with increased amounts of pension liability contributions. And I understand, you know, some of the ARPA funds being used to get us through this year and the following year, but I have some great concerns about what we do after that. I imagine we'll keep wrestling with it very much, but I always had a principle not to vote for a budget that has a structural imbalance. But in this case, I think we have really worked this over very well. So, even though we all have points that we favor and points that we don't favor, I'm prepared to support this one.
Indeed. With that said, sir, I would seek a motion to move the budget with the exception of the park and recreation fees.
So, moved?
Or second?
I'll second. And then, Mr. Mayor, just to piggyback on your comment to Mr. Pakic, we have done a lot of street improvements in the south part of town the previous years. So, that's another reason we're going north. And then also, as far as what's too much of an inconvenience, right now in my neighborhood, they're fixing four or five streets, and they started last October. And I can tell you, I walk my dog through that route every day, and even though we're going to get brand-new streets, sewer, water, some sidewalks, it has been a little bit of an inconvenience now going so long. So, it's different to everyone, but I appreciate the work that Parks and Public Works has done, and we're going to get all those sewers and water mains fixed so they're not breaking every month.
That's the AMP business model, right?
I'd like to have one more.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, sir, please.
I almost brought it up with Mr. Grantham up here as well, but it is a big problem when there are street repairs and areas out of availability. I know Orange Thorpe has been a long-running problem here with the construction that's been going on. But to put it in perspective, I think some of the longest duration and largest impacts are felt when we've had recent freeway widenings. Many years ago, the widening of the 91 freeway took four years to complete, and it made the commute almost impossible. I worked just four miles from home. Some days, it would take nearly an hour. And we, anyone who transits through the 405 for the last, I don't know how many years now, six, seven, something like that, it's still not really resolved. So, we do get the bleed over from those projects, and the impacts of that are so much greater than almost anything that we deal with, with our surface streets, arterials or otherwise.
Thank you very much for that.
But again, thank you, Public Works, for all you're doing.
Certainly at Councilmember Silva's street, anyhow.
It's not even my street.
Madam City Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Dunlap.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Mayor Protime Whitaker.
Aye.
Mayor Jung.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Again, with the continuation of item number 16, we are on to 17, Regulation and Prohibition of Unlawful Possession of Cadillac Converters. And this presentation is being done by Chief Dunn. Chief Dunn, sir.
Sir, there's no formal presentation for this. A lot of the item speaks for itself. However, a short time ago, I was contacted by Councilmember Dunlop, and he noticed that a lot of our surrounding cities had taken some action as a city to help combat catalytic converter theft, which we've all seen throughout the county in increase. And so, we worked with our city attorney's office to draft the ordinance, and we have that for you here today, sir.
And we have done this in several cities. What I would add to this is the fact that the state legislature now has three or four bills also pending in Sacramento to address this issue, and that may ultimately preempt some of the things we're taking action on this evening, but this is a good first step for us.
Very good. We'll hear public comment on this item. Seeing none in chambers, we'll go to Zoom.
I'll be on Zoom.
Very well. Bring this back to council. I'd welcome a motion to move this item.
I'll move the item.
Very well. Is there a second?
Second.
Very good. Madam City Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Dunlap.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Mayor Protime Whitaker.
Aye.
Mayor Jung.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. If the mayor will indulge me, I will read the title of the ordinance. This is Ordinance Number 3314, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fullerton, California, adding Fullerton Municipal Code Title 7, Public Safety and Morals, Chapter 161, unlawful possession of a catalytic converter prohibited, establishing regulations prohibiting the unlawful possession of catalytic converters in the city.
Thank you. On to item 18, which is Water Shortage Contingency Plan Level 2. And I believe our water quality specialist, Delaney Felix, will make a presentation. Ms. Felix, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protime, councilmembers. As I said, I am the water quality specialist, but I'm also going to be taking the lead in our conservation efforts for the city of Fullerton. So, to give kind of a brief overview, as you may know, the city of Fullerton receives about 23% of our water from the Metropolitan Water District, who the Metropolitan Water District receives water supplies from the State Water Project, as well as the Colorado River Aqueduct. And as many of you may have seen in the news, the State Water Project has reduced their allocation for the Metropolitan Water District to either 5% or basically just to cover the human health and safety. So, a lot of the areas in Los Angeles County, Ventura, and Santa Barbara are anticipating a one-day-per-week water shortage in order to meet these allocation demands. And, oh, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. So, in order for us to make sure that we have enough water to provide for our citizens, provide for all of Southern California, we need to work together with the Metropolitan Water District to conserve our water. Next slide, please. We also receive about 77% of our water from the Orange County Water District, who has made great strides in working to replenish our groundwater wells. They have implemented the world's largest groundwater replenisher system, which generates 100 million gallons per day. a hundred million gallons per day to be replenished as either saltwater intrusion or to replenish our groundwater supply. On March twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two, Governor Newsom extended the emergency drought orders with the executive order number N dash seven dash twenty-two. This executive order requires all water utilities to implement water restrictions to save up to twenty percent by June tenth, twenty-twenty-two, requires water utilities to submit a preliminary annual water supply and demand assessment by June first, which we have already done, and submit a finalized version of that report by July first. And the governor also tasked the State Water Resources Control Board with adopting and defining the term of non-functional turf and what requirements would be implemented for commercial, industrial, and institutional customers. We have been coordinating with the city of Santa Ana and the city of Anaheim to create a cooperative outreach to our citizens because we do share borders, and all three of our agencies are original members of the Metropolitan Water District. So we have our little Be Water Wise mascot here. We call him the Water Nerd. So that way, customers, as they go throughout our borders between the three cities, have kind of consistent messaging to see that we are all trying to conserve water. We have also had discussions on how to implement new restrictions that have been brought down from the state and to how we have patrolled our drought and how we have enforced our drought between the three cities in the past. Here you can see a visual readout of City of Fullerton's water production from the year twenty-twenty to the year twenty-twenty-two. The yellow line represents the fifteen percent reduction that the governor had asked all Californians to reduce by in October twenty-twenty-one. The red line is the twenty percent reduction the governor is now asking us to do. Between October twenty-twenty-one and March twenty-twenty-two, we saw a four percent reduction, which is not quite at the fifteen percent the governor had originally asked, and that is part of the reason that California as a whole has been asked to go on to our Level Two to try and meet that twenty percent reduction. So the Water Division has been working very hard to try and do a bunch of outreach for our customers. We have kind of bombarded our social media accounts. We implemented, we partnered with Mayor Jung for the National Mayor's Challenge, which we competed with multiple cities across the nation to see who could save the most water per population capita. I believe at the very end, we were thirteenth for our population grade. We have also worked with our Parks and Rec, our landscape division, and the school districts to kind of have an open conversation of what the drought impacts can be and what the steps would be to go through in the future. So the biggest question is, what does a Level Two shortage look like for Fullerton? All the permanent water conservation measures will stay in place. The majority of the biggest impacts that will be coming down for Fullerton residents and Fullerton customers would be limited to three days per week watering based on address, be asking residents to water either before ten a.m. or water, sorry, water before nine a.m. or water after four p.m. And then we would ask residents that they do not fill their pools or spas unless there is a pool cover present, and then when that pool or spa is not in use, to use a pool cover. So there are potential impacts that we have discussed as part of the Water Shortage Contingency Plan that was passed back in June twenty-twenty-one. This grab is pulled directly from there. And staff will monitor the fiscal health of the water fund related to drought reductions and provide updates as needed if we are seeing an impact to our funding. Fullerton is deciding to go with an education-based enforcement, meaning we are not going to go directly to ticketing. We do not feel that is fair. We feel like we would like to communicate with our customers, either through a phone call or in-person conversations, to let customers know better ways to save water and to no longer use water unwisely. We will also be monitoring the largest users for Fullerton and encouraging them to save twenty percent and working with them to provide them their water use data on either a monthly or bimonthly basis, so that way they can see what their water trending is. So the city of Fullerton, we have met with both the Interact Committee, the Interact and the Parks and Rec Committee to discuss ways that the drought will impact Fullerton as well as impact the residents. When we brought these measure up to the Parks and Rec Committee, we had proposed to try and save twenty percent across all public parks that the city of Fullerton maintains, not including the school grounds the landscape division maintains. So as you can see here, we have a proposed map of the parks that will receive reduced watering based on their sports field activity levels, their tree health, and their activity use. So this part, this map is kind of a fluid living map. As we see some parks are doing better than others, we do have the opportunity to kind of adjust the watering as needed. In summary, the Water Division would like City Council's support staff recommendations to increase the water shortage response level to Level Two and to adopt the preceded resolution to establish a Level Two water supply shortage. We'd also like you to authorize the city manager or their designee to determine the appropriate percentage of required water reduction up to twenty percent, depending on the drought severity and the State Water Resources Control Board requirements.
Well, Ms. Felix, superb. Thank you very much. We're going to now move to public comments on this item if members of the public wish to comment. Seeing none, we'll go to Zoom. I'm sorry. Go to Zoom, and we'll get Mr. Package. I got it, sir. No problem. Anybody in Zoom?
No hands raised in Zoom.
Mr. Package, good evening again, sir.
Good evening again. I've, at the farmer's market, I've had a chance to talk with this young lady several times about this. I want to point out that we have a water waster telephone number, that you, seven-one-four, seven-three-eight, six-seven-four-four, which members of the public can call in, take a picture of the residents and the overflow of the water, and then we will send out somebody to talk to them about that. I'm very curious about the restrictions on apartments' condos with green space. And do we have a turf-removable program coming up or some, there's discussions on turf-removable program? So if you want to answer those questions?
Oh, while Ms. Felix is coming up. No, my, while she's coming up to answer some of those questions for you, sir, the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California does have a replacement program rebate, but it is drought-tolerant landscaping. It does not, right now, at this time, include artificial turf. So that kind of gives you some cohesive path forward, I suppose, in answering some of that. And then I'll, we'll ask Ms. Felix to complete those answers.
Yes, and just for reference, that drought tolerant replacement is two dollars per square foot is the rebate currently. And then to answer the question regarding the turf areas for apartment complexes, homeowners' associations, commercial buildings, the State Water Resources Control Board did meet and discuss the non-functional turf aspect of it, and they have determined that throughout this drought, it would be, they are restricting watering with potable water for non-functional turf. Non-functional turf would be any area that basically is not used for civil amenities for customers. It's basically anything that only a landscaper would walk on and maintain. So in those cases, they are requiring to not use potable water to irrigate those areas. It will be up to the state to enforce that. But the city of Fullerton will be reaching out to all of our commercial, industrial, and institutional customers to let them know of this new ordinance that has coming down from the state and to prepare them in case there are any issues or any questions that they have. They are free to ask us those questions.
Thank you. You know, the governor's carrot of voluntary conservation did not work. Water usage actually increased amazingly. So now this is the stick, and I can only assume it'll get worse. So I ask our residents to recognize that we are in a very severe drought to conserve where they can and reimagine what parks look like. It is an enormous amount of water that we use to irrigate our parks, our school districts. You know, if you speak so eloquently at council meetings about what the community means to you, what children mean to you, what these budgets mean to you, I would ask you to do something about that in terms of conservation of water that gets us a little further along there than it would normally. The other thing I'd like to mention is I want to thank Director Tai Fan, Director Stephen Fessel, and even Director Adana Ortega for their diligent work at the Metropolitan Water District on our behalf and working so hard with the citizens and staff of Fullerton to make sure that the three cities that are the oldest in Orange County, Anaheim, Santa Ana, and Fullerton are represented well and that our values are heard throughout that district. Lastly, I did want to propose to the state, who has a record surplus yet again, that funding should be provided perhaps to augment the revenue losses that we will have and incur as an agency because of these reductions. So perhaps they should use some of that money to make sure that some of these agencies are made whole. And last but not least, my final comment to our staff and our residents, thirteenth is last place as far as I'm concerned. We'll have to try harder and get to first next year. Thank you. Mr. Mayor Protime, anything, sir?
Yes, I wanted to ask again, you had a chart there that showed the financial impact of conservation, and I'm glad that the mayor addressed it because we are working hard to obtain funding to replace our aging infrastructure with water. And it's a pretty significant effect that if we match the twenty percent requirement or more that multi-year, that becomes a very large problem. It even becomes a problem, and you did a good job also in relating the activities of GWRS, which is recycling wastewater at a hundred gallons per day. We're nearing the completion and the operation of the hundred and thirty million gallon per day, which should happen next year. And that is, again, a significant new source of water, something that we didn't have before. One of the things that happens, though, with GWRS is when we have heavy water use restrictions, we start losing a lot of the source material, which we need to be able to turn back into super-pure water. So it's another illustration, I believe, that shows us that we can't really conserve our way out of this, and that's partly why engineers at OCWD have been working to have more multiple sources of water and to be able to be a little more self-sufficient. And I know this is going to create some financial duress on our water utility, and that's why I'm hopeful that Mother Nature will do her part fairly soon and make sure we don't have multi-year deficits here in terms of financial capability to put new water supply lines in our city. But it looks like you're doing great work, and I appreciate this approach of, first of all, not having citizens turn on other citizens and try to turn them in and create neighbor quarrels of that sort. And second of all, you know, pricing alone, we've been scaling up pricing on water to our water customers in this city. That alone sends a strong signal not to waste water, and I believe that plus new building code restrictions are going to start having a beneficial effect. In fact, for the last twenty years, we've been reducing our water use here in Orange County fairly significantly. So once again, conservation at times like this, we have to turn to, but it's not really the long-term answer. We do need to provide enough fresh water for all of the needs of every tier of our economy. But thank you, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Silva.
Yeah, and if I may add, you know, to this fiscal impact, I think I also want to say that this may have been worse if we had not changed our rate structure a few years ago when we went to more of a fixed cost emphasis versus a variable cost. Because I think if we would have stuck with the old structure, we would have been in a deeper hole. And I know it wasn't a happy thing, but I think overall, it's going to help us. And thank you very much, you know, lady, for your presentation.
Another applause for good governance, sir. Councilman Dunlop, anything, sir? All right, very good. I'll seek a motion to move this item, then.
I'll move the item.
Oh, second?
Very well. Madam City Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Dunlap.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Mayor Protime Whitaker.
Aye.
Mayor Jung.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
And the final regular item before we go back to the consent calendar is item number nineteen, Measure M two Funding Eligibility Renewal. Now, Mr. Grantham, we have the pleasure of your company once more this evening, sir.
Again, thank you very much. This is actually going to be a two-pronged presentation. Well, council is probably very familiar with the M two funding, but I thought as part of this eligibility renewal, take the opportunity to, a little transparency, a little background information for our residents about how we get some of our funding, Measure M two, but also then highlight the pavement management plan that is updated every two years. So I just wanted to combine the two of them. So with that, I will ask Jerome McKean, our senior public works analyst, to do a little background on M two funding.
Thank you, Mr. Grantham. Good evening, Mayor Fred Jung, councilmembers. As Mr. Grantham said, my name is Jerome McKean, Senior Analyst at Public Works Department. The item before you tonight is the Measure M two Funding Eligibility Renewal. Before we go to the eligibility renewal portion, I'd like to go over the OCTA's M two program briefly. And so what is M two? Measure M two is a one-half cent sales tax within Orange County. It was actually approved initially in nineteen ninety, and in two thousand and six, it was extended until twenty forty-one. It's more commonly referred to as Measure M two. Revenue from Measure M can be used to improvements related to streets, freeways, transit, and environmental programs. With that said, OCTA allocates M two to, sorry, next slide, please, several OCTA projects, competitive grant programs, and direct allocations to local agencies. It is estimated that the city will receive approximately two-point-seven million for next fiscal year under the local fair share and a hundred and thirty thousand under the senior mobility program for the next fiscal year. To maintain, next slide, please, and to maintain the city's eligibility to continue receiving M two funds, the city must meet OCTA's eligibility requirements, which is a long list of reports, documentations, and certifications to be provided to OCTA. Next slide, please. And the following list is our eligibility requirements for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. I'm not going to go over all of these requirements, but I do want to point out on the PMP, which is the payment management plan. As Mr. Grantham said, he will go over that presentation. It is due every other year to OCTA, and it is a inspection and a rating of city street improvements, sorry, payment conditions. Next slide, please. This list are the other eligibility requirements for future fiscal years. Again, I'm not going to go over all of this list, but as you can see, this are a long, laundry list of requirements to OCTA for us to continue receiving M two funds. With that said, that's pretty much a brief overview of M two eligibility renewal. I now turn it to Mr. Grantham for the PMP.
Thank you. So unfortunately, OCTA doesn't give us a blank check every year. We do have to work for it, so ups and downs for that, I guess. So pavement management plan, PMP, every two years, we do have to update this every two years, and it seems like it was just a couple weeks ago I was doing this, but I do think it's something that the residents do pick up on, and they do use and look at. So it is something that I do want to bring to the public and to council's attention. So very quickly, as Jerome says, is a requirement. We do do it, update it officially every two years. Now, OCTA has strict requirements. Certification from OCTA is required to do the report, so we do do use a consultant to do this. Bachmann Infrastructure Group has done our last four now PMP updates and been very happy with them, give good quality work at a good price. But next year, I need to go out to RFQ, so we'll see who's doing it next year. We do maintain almost three hundred miles of roads. We have to visually inspect all our arterial roads, so seventy miles of roads every other year. Our local roads must be visually inspected once every six years. So the way I'm handling this now is the even years, when we have to do the updates, I do all the arterial inspections. Then the odd years, I do a third of the local roads. The idea behind that is I'm trying to keep the PMP and the inspection reports as up-to-date as I possibly can to have the most current information we use to budget and forecast. So. So the point of the PMP, it is to help us understand where our pavement conditions are going, how I can strategize, what streets we want to deal with. And OCTA is very interested to know how each city is doing. So all this information is provided to them. A major component of the PMP is the Pavement Condition Index, otherwise known as the PCI. It's a very basic understanding, 0 to 100 rating. If you've got, if you've basically got a dirt road, which I'm sure some residents would state they have, it's zero. If you've just paved it, it's 100. Anything in between depends on how bad the road really is. Next slide, please. There are many factors that impact the pavement. Unfortunately, the vast majority of the list here does apply to City of Fullerton. The one exception, I will say, stormwater infiltration, doesn't really rain too much. On the flip side, we have a lot of main breaks, so we get a lot of water in our subgrades that way. So I wish that we didn't have this long list. Unfortunately, it does there. So it's compounded over time to create the situation that we're in right now. So again, this is not something that happened over the last couple of years. Where we're at, this is a long-term issue that's been just gaining speed. And a lot of these factors are the reason why. Next slide, please. All right, let's give you a little better news. We're heading in the right direction. The blue line you can see is arterial streets. That has jumped significantly over the last two years. In comparison, that's a pretty massive jump than you would typically see. The green line is our citywide going up and our local streets going up slightly too. So trending in the right direction absolutely the last few years. Next slide, please. So how does that break down? The arterial streets, the pie chart there, is kind of where we want to be for all our streets. It's not lopsided. The fair, good, and very good take up the vast majority of the percentage of the roads. The poor and the very poor, small. So over the last few years, for a number of different reasons, we've done really well to get our PCI up, our conditions up for arterial roads. Part of that is obviously we do have private development over the past few years that have done a lot of work on arterial roads. Beckman Center, a few years ago, OC Sand District did State College. It's been a few years, but that helps. Goodman is doing Orange Thork right now. But we've also taken the, over the last four or five years since I've been here, we've put in discussions with NRA, we've taken all our SB1 funds and put them on arterial roads. And I think we can see the impact that has made for arterial roads. However, the local roads, completely unbalanced. You've got the same amount of poor streets as you do as very good. So obviously, everyone knows their local streets are not in great shape. And this is just reinforcing that fact. So overall, we're still unbalanced. Because we have so many more miles of local streets and arterials, we're still unbalanced in that respect. Next slide, please. All right, the fun charts. So we'll start with the very good. Spread out throughout the entire city, you can see certain neighborhood, where we've hit neighborhoods for water and sewer projects, you can see they're kind of grouped. Next slide, please. Now, we're down to good. Starting to kind of separate. You don't really see it as the neighborhoods. Next one, fair. Hard to see, but kind of the same idea. We're not seeing it in more of a neighborhood situation. Next one. All right, the poor. It's still spread out quite a bit throughout the city, so it's really not focused in one area. But you're starting to see it's more, starting to be more of a neighborhood situation. And final slide, the slide no one wants to see, are very poor conditions. But you're starting to see neighborhoods again break, show up here. All right, next slide. So PMP gives recommendations. So if we want to keep the streets in our current condition, we would need, they're recommending a budget of 4.5 million a year to do our arterials and 7.2 for our local streets. Obviously, council gave us the 13.1 million that we'll be spending over the next couple of years. That is fantastic. That helps a lot. The other thing is, what do we do after that? Our current funding that we get from SB1 and M2 will not allow us to maintain these levels of investment into our streets. Next slide. So where does that leave us? Next year, we're going to rise up again. And then if we don't find any more available funding, we're going to start going the wrong direction. We're going to start going, heading in a downward trend, as is shown on the chart there. Next slide. I've shown this chart before. Unfortunately, every year, the costs go up. It's just a budgetary guide as to what it could cost in general to do mileage of road. Every street is different. Every soil condition is different. But in general, this is a really good use of, for budgetary guys, of what we would need to do to do a very large project, we could use these costs. So we really wish we could do slurry seal. Unfortunately, we're doing a lot more full-depth grinds and overlay and full-depth reclamation projects, which are significantly more expensive. Next slide. So we are recommending you adopt the resolution so we can submit to OCTA and continue receiving our M2 funds. With that, I'll take any questions.
Thanks, sir. Before we go to council questions, any members of the public that wish to comment on this item? Seeing none in chambers, going to move over to Zoom. All right, very well. We'll bring this back to council. First and foremost, I do want to announce that Fullerton has a representative on the OCTA for the first time in a very long time. And that is myself. I was elected to the board a few weeks ago. So I expect that Fullerton will get its just desserts accordingly and get funding for projects that we so dearly need. The other thing I want to do and inform our public on these M2 funds, they expire in the year 2040. So let's get as much done as we can while we have it, because we won't have it for long. And finally, I wanted to thank every member of this council for making sure we're trending in the right direction and for prioritizing infrastructure. This wasn't easy. It was a heavy lift on all of these council members, but we took a lot of heat over it, and the public still do. But, you know, it's obvious why it was needed, plainly obvious. And hopefully this will turn down the volume a little bit and we can get the business of the city done accordingly. And then one other good news for you, Mr. Grantham. On your poor index, you could take one street off. Burning Tree, the Homeowners Association at West Bluff has allocated money to do that street. So you could take one off the poor list, sir. With that, I do entertain any members of council with comments or questions. Otherwise, I'd seek a motion.
One quick comment.
Yes, sir.
It is very, very good to see the improvement in the PCI index. This became my top issue for the city back in 2013, when I first served as mayor. So nine years later, it's, as they say in government, progress comes very slowly. But it's very encouraging to see that trend. And we need to redouble our efforts as a council to make sure that we can, we can maintain that trend. But thanks for the report.
Councilman Silva.
Yeah, just thank you for the report and the details. And with that, I'll move the item.
Very well. Is there a second?
Second.
You know, yeah, I'd just like to comment. I mean, not to pile on here, but obviously, this is the great unifier of Fullertonians, whether you live in North Fullerton, South Fullerton, East Fullerton, West Fullerton. I mean, these are the issues that face us all. And so I think to the extent we can come together as a city and really try to advocate for these needs to be met and for the improvement to continue, I think it's very important. So, you know, obviously supportive of this is it's a very small step towards, I think, the bigger work that is needed. So, thank you.
Indeed. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dunlap.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Whitaker.
Aye.
Mayor Jung.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Now, that concludes the basic portion of our meeting. We're going to go back to our consent calendar. Item number two was pulled by Councilmember Silva instead of going, or unless he needs it, with a, without a staff presentation, if there are questions, that can be answered.
Yeah, Mr. Gamble, did you have a question on item two?
Yes, a second reading, yeah.
Mr. Gamble, good evening again.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Mr. Mayor, congratulations on your OCTA Board sitting. Thank you. Again, my name is Curtis Gamble, activist for the homeless and the veterans. I just want to comment on item number two. As, as it's going to be very important to the, to the community, this SB9, I noticed that when we were talking about this item many times, we didn't, we didn't mention, which I don't know if we should, but I didn't hear things like, like, for example, accessory, we talked about accessory dwelling units. I didn't hear like tiny houses, shipping container homes. I'm missing a lot of the things that, for example, LA has that's really helping out their community as far as the low-income housing is concerned. So I was just wondering if we could, if you could say something about tiny houses in Orange County, our accessory dwelling units, our shipping container homes. These are all things to help out our community, but we never mentioned those. And the reason I want them mentioned also, because when I went to the Anaheim Convention Center, a meeting for, it was a, they had tiny homes there, and I got a chance to tour some of them, and I met some of the owners. And they were very, it was very, it was very good what they were offering as far as, for example, first responder housing shelters for the unhoused. And these could also serve as medical cleaning rooms, job site office, junior ADUs, off-grid, seasonal, and Airbnb. This is what this company, Fodham, had to offer. And so as far as the residents were concerned also is that these type of accessory dwelling units will generate income for the residents. And these projects can be delivered within less than 30 days easily. They can generate anywhere from 1,000, 2,000, 3,000, 4,000 a month. And so I just want to make sure that we have a smooth road that will allow the residents to get their accessory dwelling units. Because I noticed in the past, when we did this with this accessory dwelling units, we kind of made it a little bit difficult that nobody even really applied. And so I just want to kind of comment on that. Thank you.
All right, sir. Thank you very much. You know, Mr. Gamble, what I would encourage you, if you've got the, if you have a moment, sir, is to reach out to me in the next two weeks. I'm happy to sit down with you, members of our staff, to discuss all of these things. But it may be a little bit more, not only proactive on your part, but perhaps it may get some wisdom not only to myself and our staff, but perhaps to you as well, to sit down and address these things rather than here in a council meeting, sir, if you don't mind. I suggest that if you have, if you have some time.
Thank you. I'll be happy to do that.
Very good.
Can I just give some?
No, sir. We got to move forward. Thank you.
Can I just pass some?
Yes, please.
Okay.
All right. With that said, if there's nothing further from council, I'll seek a motion to move this item.
I'll move the item.
Very well. Is there a second? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dunlap.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Whitaker.
Aye.
Mayor Jung.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Very well. And then Councilman Silva did pull number seven. Item number seven is the Municipal Water District of Orange County Agreement for Shared Water Programs and Services, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just a couple of questions on it. I know that we're, we have partnered with the MODOC since 20, what did it say, 2011 on some of these services. And I had a couple of questions on some of the programs that they're offering. On page two of the staff report, it goes into, there's a chart that shows the budget, the budget for initial five-year plans, which has water efficiency, student education, water supply research and studies, and mutual, mutual aid, emergency training. So the question I had was student education and the water supply research and studies. Did we go out and get, I guess, a second proposal? And the reason I'm asking is that I know that the Orange County Water District has one of the highest-rated labs and research centers that, and again, I don't know if that's possible, but if they have one, did we seek a proposal from MODOC and OCWD? And as far as the student education, did we go out and also maybe get a proposal from our school district or the Muckin Dollar Center, or someone here in Fullerton where we can leave Fullerton dollars in Fullerton?
So those are great questions. MODOC serves as that regional agency, and they bid these projects out. So we join with them if we choose to and utilize the services. So for example, when they did Discovery Science Center, they did an RFP and a solicitation.
Okay, so they did, and they chose the Discovery Center?
Yes.
Okay. And how about for the water supply research and studies? Did, same thing?
Same thing. That, and that'll depend on what the current requirement is. So our urban water management plan and the water shortage contingency plan that we brought to you this evening, that was done under a shared service-type program. Well, this just kind of formalizes our methodology. Typically, we'd bring back every single urban water management plan when we go to Discovery Science Center. So this streamlines our process and enables us to join with them when it's appropriate.
Okay, great. Now, so I guess it wouldn't be efficient if we went out and said, hey, who can provide student education on our own and so forth? That just would be too much?
Actually, I've, I've done it both ways. So at my prior agency, we did it in-house, and then we also did shared service. This is actually a really good deal for what we get.
All right, fair enough. And then one other thing, on page three, it was a page three, yeah, it talks about how the MODOC provided water education to all public and private K through sixth elementary students. And so the question I have, can we move that to K through eighth? The reason I say that is because a few years ago, before COVID, I actually reached out to them as a seventh-grade teacher. I wanted some materials, but they wouldn't give them to me. Because I guess apparently it was because I was a seventh-grade teacher versus K through sixth. So I asked to see if we can go back and include the elementary school district in Fullerton, which would be K through eighth.
So we'll talk with MODOC as well as Discovery Science Center. I recall also when we were bidding the project at my prior agency, they have very specific curriculum for the seventh and eighth grade classes. So we can find out from MODOC if they can add that.
Yeah, because I know MWD has some of that curriculum, so we can get it from them. And anyway, just because I do remember calling them and I said, no, you're not, you don't qualify. And I was like, wait a minute, I'm Orange County. What do you mean? But anyway, all right. And those were the questions. Thank you very much. And with that, Mayor, I'll move the item if there's no other questions.
I'll seek a second.
Second.
Very well.
And we do have one hand raised in Zoom.
Oh, is that right?
Couldn't get all night without a Zoom call. So.
Very well. Let's, let's, let's hear the Zoom public comment, please.
This is caller ending 5062. You should be able to unmute.
Yeah, hello. There you are. Yeah, hello. I was calling him on either, I had my hand raised and I didn't get called on.
All right, I'm sorry, sir. That item's already been moved. It's already been passed.
Well, my hand was raised. You skipped over me.
I understand what you're saying. So please excuse us and the staff accordingly. And if you would be so kind as to put your public comment in electronic form, it'll come out to our council accordingly. Please.
Unbelievable. You guys are violating the law. You know, you got the letter from Temple City.
Thank you very much.
Saying what you're doing.
Thank you, sir. With that said, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dunlap.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Whitaker.
Aye.
Mayor Jung.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
And with that, we will conclude this evening's meeting. The next meeting is June 21st, same bat time, same bat channel.
And, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, oh, I'm sorry.
And if I may, if I would have the honor of everyone, if we could just take a moment of silence in, in respect to the tragedy in Uvalde, Texas, if you would join me for a moment.
In Buffalo.
Thank you very much. And yes, also in Buffalo. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You bet, sir. Good evening, everyone.